President, John, here, Sarah.
Here.
Excuse us. Let's move to the adjutant.
With allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
All right. The motion for the agenda. So the motion goes second.
Second.
On the favor.
Aye.
Public input time in place for discussion. I was not already on the agenda with time limit of three minutes each.
Thank you, Mayor. Just want to take a minute and introduce everybody to Officer Esteban McCarron. Been back with us since mid-April and usually working overnight. So, one of the days this week, a little bit in love with Dave. So, just wanted to take a minute and introduce him to you. And, any questions for him? He's happy to answer those too.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Happy so far?
Yeah. Both towns are great and good.
Your boss is right there.
Practice that and practice.
Everything is good as ever to you.
We can talk about her.
Thank you, welcome.
Thank you.
We'll talk later.
Thank you.
Discussion about school action in reference to Southeast Lynn loss allocation.
So, every year, we've always given out of the loss program, it's local option sales tax. It's supposed to be money allocated kind of for the whole community, different ideas. So, we always gave $4,000 to Southeast Lynn for the before and after school program. That is no longer happening, but Nicole has other programs that she's listed in your packet, and she's here to discuss those with you and try to repurpose that money elsewhere.
Yeah, thanks. So, just wanted to give kind of an overview of the things, the different programs we have specifically, was looking at the ones that focus on youth since the after-school program was geared towards youth. So, got them listed there, but our Parks and Rec scholarships, scholarships for Lisbon kids to use the Lester Burris Center Wellness Center in Mount Vernon. We do free school supplies every year and that keeps growing each year. More kids are needing help with that. The pool passes is another thing that keeps growing. Probably seeing the last couple of years, we've had to do extra fundraising to try to cover the families that want to use the pool. And then, we're doing the free gardening and art classes throughout the summer and early out activities during the school year. So, do you think that it would be appropriate to use any of those funds that had been used for the after-school program in the past? We haven't had anybody asking for the after-school program, haven't had anybody looking for that, but these other programs are popular and growing, so I'd put that up for consideration. Couple of numbers. For the pool passes this year, this summer, just for Lisbon families, our cost is just under $4,000 total. For school supplies last year, for just Lisbon students, it's just under $2,000 that we spent on that. And then, spent about 200 this year on the Parks and Rec scholarships for Lisbon kids. I think there are probably more families that might utilize that if it was a little more, you know, public, we haven't publicized it a lot in the past just because we don't have a lot of funds for it. So, it's kind of some of the same families that have used it a few times or word of mouth. Then the LBC scholarships this year, we've spent about $800 on Lisbon families to utilize that program.
Does, does Mount Vernon fund your organization as well?
They do, yeah.
I mean, the, I'm, just take exception to the pool passes thing. I mean, we have a free pool.
Sure.
And Lisbon is funding pool passes so that Lisbon kids can go to Mount Vernon's pool?
So, it's mostly, I'd say it's mostly the elementary and middle school age kids that are using the, the full pool rather than the, more like the toddlers, little ones that are using that.
Then, Mount Vernon doesn't give us any kind of a stipend on that? I mean, a discount on those?
They do give us a slight discount for the families that we sponsor. So, for the, those, those pool paths, it's a scholarship. So, we cover 75% of the cost and the family covers 25%. And that's traditionally just come from Southeast Lynn fund, general funds. But the last few years, there's been so much interest that we've fundraised from the community for that as well. The city of Mount Vernon did give direct funding to us when the LBC opened to help fund scholarships, and that's been depleted. They will probably replenish that, but it was just, if, if we wanted, you know, any city funding, we go to specifically Lisbon families.
I don't, I mean, I don't have any, do you know how much Mount Vernon charges for a family?
For, like, yeah, for the LBC, it's, I believe, $180 for three months for a family. For the pool pass, it's $160 for the summer.
So, it'd be the same as those ones, okay. So, and, is, I mean, the $4,000, I mean, that's only 33, 33 families. How do they determine who gets it?
Yeah, it's based on financial need. So, it's people who are already qualified for like the free school lunches, or Medicaid, or Hawkeye, or already qualified for those programs. Or food pantry, a lot of those are food pantry families.
I mean, and I, I see where you're coming from, Nate, about the splash pack. I mean, if you're 14, 15, do you want to go splash pack?
Yep, no.
And I don't, I don't feel, like, if you were interested in one of these programs and not any, I just wanted to give you the layout of all of the possibilities, so.
Just a couple of things too. Travis and Grayton can chime in here. Typically, our biggest problems over there are when 13- and 14-year-olds are there causing problems, so.
Somebody's helping.
It's okay.
We can absolutely send them by.
And then, the other thing, I just didn't have enough time from after speaking to Nicole. One thing I'm looking at in the future is possibly funding this out TIF because there's a portion of that that's low to moderate income. I don't know if this, any of this are qualified, but going forward in the future, it might be an opportunity for us to take advantage of that too. So, I'll look into that for future funding, but.
And it's not like the, the pool's a big moneymaker for Mount Vernon, doesn't have any stretch of imagination, but just see God that Lisbon funds were funded to a Mount Vernon program like now.
I think it's red every year.
Yeah, what's that?
It's red every year.
Yeah, exactly. I'm sure it is, so, okay.
And then, Mount Vernon has their own program for low-income Mount Vernon benefits.
No.
Don't, don't they give you a number of scholarships for Mount Vernon benefits?
For the pool?
For the pool.
No, it all comes from, from just our general fund. So, I'm just saying for city Lisbon funds, we would use it just for Lisbon families, but no, they don't specifically fund it.
And how much would you do for after-school?
Four thousand. So, Lisbon decided for that, yeah.
And they have not received that yet this year, for this fiscal year.
Which was, I think, the reason for the reach-out, right? That it was sitting there and not being used.
It is, yes, because the funds are there, just after-school program never took place, so.
You guys could make a decision tonight to look and have this for other purposes?
I, you know, I, this is my, I just, you know, I mean, I think Nicole would be, she's wise enough to know what she needs the money for. I mean, it's $4,000, but she's out of it, she's out of it. You know?
I'm kind of on that same page.
I'm in favor of it.
Yeah.
As, as am I. I just, that just stuck out in my, in my, as I was reading this, the, worth of question. Although, yeah, I'm in support of it as well.
Turn your motion.
Motion to approve Nicole to kind of use her best judgment of what the $4,000 should go to.
Second.
Second.
Motion in second. Hey.
Aye.
Mike, aye, John.
Aye.
Sarah. Aye.
Thank you, Nicole.
Perfect, Nicole.
Discussion about school action in reference to city insurance for the law.
All right. This page here in your packet, so you can pull this up and look at it. The top, the top left box, that is our current plan for city benefits for employees. And as you can see, the increase is 11.73% and 17,000. One thing that I know that council has always shared in the past, if there was ever opportunities to offer a better benefit for a small amount of cost, to bring it your way. Jamie Hopkins is on from Sagacity. He is our broker for our insurance. I had him come tonight to go over this. I, obviously, in my position, take it, you know, I take the benefit package here, so I feel a little awkward discussing it, and so Jamie is here to do that and talk that over with me.
Hi, everybody. Thanks for having me. Can everybody hear me?
Yep.
Yep.
Okay. One thing I wanted to ask somebody on your end to do is, I can't share screen, and it says host disabled. So, I didn't know if that's a feature that you guys have on your laptop over there, maybe somebody could look at that while I'm talking. Although, if everybody's got it in front of you, I can also, I can also just step you through that. Okay, good. All right, let me just find the right spot. Okay. So, I'm gonna treat this a little bit, and, okay. So, I'm just gonna give you a primer on how I set these boxes up, and ultimately, what I am gonna illustrate is the cost if you stayed in the same place, and then the cost if you decided to bring your deductible and out-of-pocket max down just a little bit to have a richer benefit for the employees for City Lisbon. So, this box on the top left, this, so this is the deductible, and right now, what's going on is that you have a Walmart plan in place that has a $4,000 base plan, and then what the city does is, basically, using city funds, they buy down that $4,000 deductible through a $1,000 deductible. So, that's 4,000 for a single, 8,000 for a family, bought down to 1,000, and 2,000 for a family. Now, the next boxes are the out-of-pocket max, and I'll just take a brief second and explain how that works. So, when the employee hits $1,000 of cost in medical care, then, basically, what happens is that the, the city and Walmart split with the employee, and they say, okay, well, Walmart will pay 70% of the additional cost, the employee will pay 30% of the additional cost, up to a maximum of $4,000 out-of-pocket max for a single. Actually, I think it's 80/20. Between the city and Walmart, they split after $1,000, where the employee only pays 20% of the costs above that, up to a maximum of $4,000, and 8,000 for a family. So, this, on the left, is the Walmart base plan, and then the city invests funds to buy down claims in this column, and this is what the employee sees. And some employees understand this buy-down concept better than others. If the employee doesn't use it very often, then they probably wouldn't need a primer, but most of the time, when they go to the provider, they get those inline benefits, and sometimes there's some go-between to, to work out the details, but those are the benefits that your employees currently enjoy. So, if, if we add up some costs, $161,930 is annual cost for the Walmart base plan, plus the claims trend on that buy-down. Now, what I've got below that is $17,000 is, is the change. So, $161,930 is $17,000 per year more, happened to be actually a round number, which is interesting. So, $17,000 is your increase if you chose to do nothing today, and that equates to 11.73% increase. Now, just for a point of clarity, these are, these are net prices, because on top of that is Connie Meyer's pricing of about $12,763 for, over the next year. I've taken those out of these costs because those aren't city costs. Connie's not city costs. So then, let's go down lower, and let's look at the, the boxes below that, and you've got, you're saying, you'll notice that the price is the same for the Walmart $4,000 plan, that base plan, is $144,930, and $144,930 here. So, the variable, and where, where it wouldn't be that hard to offer city employees a little bit richer benefit, is that instead of a $1,000 deductible, what if you bought this deductible down to $500 per employee? $1,000 for family, and instead at 4.8 for the out-of-pocket max, it would end up being So, if you did this, off to the right, you see my text box, and it, and it says, reducing your deductible and out-of-pocket max aligns you with most municipal levels. Most municipalities, I've found, have $500 deductibles. Some have lower than that, occasionally you'll run into someone that has higher than that, but without question, the cities that have a little bit higher deductibles than a neighboring city that's got a lower deductible, you tend to lose law enforcement officers. There are other positions too, but that's the most typical one where you'll have, you know, a police officer shopping one city versus the next, and sometimes that additional deductible will cause that prospective employee to go to city B that's got a little bit richer deductible. So, i-if the city bought down that benefit, you'll notice that the Walmart plan doesn't change at all. What's, what changes is the variable cost in the buy-down, or the partial self-fund is what it's also called. So, up above, we have a, a cost of $161,930, which is 17,000 more. Doing this would only be an increase of around $6,400. So, it would go to $167,330, and instead of $17,000 worth of increase, you'd take $22,400 worth of increase, and that, instead of being 11.73, ends up being about a 15% increase. That's really not a lot of money, an additional $6,400 in, in projected expenses to be able to show, you know, twice as rich of a benefit theoretically. And then, to the right of that, at the bottom, I showed an example that has a $0 deductible. $0 deductibles are incredible recruiting tools, and I don't know what challenges the city has had finding staff, but if you have had a challenge finding staff, $0 deductible is a really, really attractive thing to show prospective employee. And what I've shown here is $0, single, $0 family, and then, the employee would be responsible for a $750 out-of-pocket max or a $1,500 out-of-pocket max. That ends up being an additional 23,600. So, on the top left, you've got a $17,000 increase compared to this version being a $40,600 increase, and instead of 11.73, this would end up being a 28% increase. You could also do something in the middle. I mean, I showed a 500, and I showed a 0. You could do a 250, and it would fall somewhere between that 22.4 and that 40,600. So, I'm gonna go to the text up on the, the top right sort of quadrant, just give you my final thoughts, and I'd be happy to take questions or any thoughts you guys might have. So, your current partial self-fund buys down the Walmart 4,000, 8,000, single-family deductible to 1,000, 2,000, single-family. Below are two examples of the cost based on the current claims trend to offer a lower deductible and out-of-pocket max. The benefit to the city is stronger retention and more effective recruitment, as well as alignment with nearby cities. And I would say, that, that's the biggest consideration. Where I, in your shoes, I would like somebody's advice that says, hey, you probably should at least match or exceed the cities around you to ensure that you have an easier time finding people now and in the future. The cost versus benefit seems relatively low compared to losing an applicant in favor of a better benefit with a nearby city. That's just an objective thought. Yeah, I will also tell you that these are not hard numbers. So, what I've done is, the city doesn't, the city doesn't spend, okay, so let's take employee A. They, they had $50,000 in claims this year. Well, in that particular case, the city spent, you know, all $3,000 getting the, getting between that $1,000 and that $4,000 when Walmart takes over. Employee A doesn't happen very often. Employee B goes to, you know, an ordinary doctor's appointment once or twice a year, fills a couple of prescriptions, and they don't even dip into that thousand, they don't even clear that $1,000 deductible. So, most of the people on your plan are not even dipping into your partial self-funding that you offer because they just don't use the, the benefits as much. So, claims funding at 20%, basically, I'm saying of the total risk of all your employees hitting all of these levels, your current, your current spending is at about 20% of that max risk. So, these numbers I've calculated on, on a funding trend of about 20%. You could have a terrible year, and that could go up to 30, 35%, you could have a great year, and that could be as low as, you know, 8 to 12. So, it changes a little bit every year, and part of the work that I do for the city is to keep Brandon in touch with, you know, we do a big year look and say, hey, how are claims running? What kind of claims year are you having? You've had, you had one person with some serious claims this year, but, you know, other people that really haven't. So, ultimately, you're trending pretty well. So, that's me doing a lot of talking. How can I, how can I respond or reflect any questions or thoughts you guys might have?
Questions, kids? Yeah, what's Mount Vernon count done?
I have to pull it up, our out-of-pocket, yeah, Jamie does ours as well. But it's, I think, the 750 and 1,500 for the.
Out-of-pocket.
Not pocket.
Yeah, the out-of-pocket.
Which one there?
It's, Jamie, you know Mount Vernon's, it's like before, it's, we just switched to a different program too, so.
Well, you know, I, I wouldn't have said this out loud if you weren't in the room, Doug, but since you asked me the question, technically, you are my client. Mount Vernon has a $0 deductible, which is very generous benefit. Very few, very few cities in Iowa offer that, and I bet they don't have a lot of recruiting products.
Any questions for him? Discussion?
Yeah, I guess the, you know, I just threw a lot of numbers and, and statistics your way, but it seems to me like if, if there's extra money in the kitty, this would be a wise place to, to make an investment, and it's relatively low comparatively. You know, you're already seeing, you're, you're in a lot of sunk costs in the benefits, so to reach just a little bit farther in order to, to offer something that is truly of value, I have to recommend. I don't have any, I don't have any vested interest, I don't have any financial gain, I'm purely an objective, well, I'm not objective, I, I work for you guys ultimately, but I'm objective in terms of this opinion because it doesn't benefit me one way or the other, but I do think it's a positive step, either one of those two options.
Here's my opinion. You know, we've fought, we've been going for the last three years, three, four years, of increasing salaries to try to get them more competitive with other cities. I'm not saying which one, it's gonna be one of the bottom two that I would, it's a benefit for the employees that, you know, if they don't spend, I mean, if they don't get hurt or a lot of sick time, it's actually a benefit for us where we could offer the ways that we're offering and say, hey, we only got this deductible, this is our insurance. You got really good insurance here, we not, might not be the top of the skill for pay, but you got really good insurance here. So, I mean, that's how I kind of look at it.
I'm, I'm in favor of being more competitive, whether it's the 0 or, or the other one.
I agree. I, I just think it just is more enticing, and I would hate to see any of our employees go broke if something happened to them because they've got so many medical expenses. That's the last word, and I wouldn't want to see out of any of the employees.
So, you got, you got insurance, when would, when would this go into effect?
July. So, so how this comes about is every year, I meet with Jamie to go over the plan, kind of where we're at, and then he throws different ideas out there, and I thought, you know, for the 6,400, I thought it was worthwhile, at least having him talk to you about it, and then he presented the other one. I don't know if you tried one, and correct me if I'm wrong, this can always, like, you can always flip back, back and forth, correct?
You, you can. Each year for July, we can make a different decision, although, you know, going to 0 and then pulling it back to 500, I'm not sure, it doesn't feel like a, a stable, doesn't feel like a stable look, so maybe you do go with the, you know, a little less aggressive this year at the 500, and then, you know, if it feels positive, you can always get richer. Harder to get leaner and not get some pushback.
I agree. How much did you have budgeted for insurance?
I mean, was it? Let me just ask you a second.
I want to say, I want to say we did a 15 or 16% increase.
See, the problem is, when you do budget, Jamie can.
Okay, so you do 15%, so that'd be like the second one.
Correct.
Because you don't know, we just find out, is it March or April, Jamie? We find out when, when Walmart comes out with their renewal, so what's bad about this is you have to forecast, and we always, it's always 10 to 15%. I'm pretty confident we would 15% higher based on what Jamie's recommendation was.
Yeah, it sounds like he has to pick a number in, you know, February, maybe March, but that's how it's a guess number because this information doesn't come available to you until, you know, April, something like that, May, maybe.
Okay, so we, I'm, I'm talking to Christine and Brandon right now. So, we've budgeted 15%.
Correct.
Somewhere around there, maybe a little bit more. So, you've already budgeted, if we would have had to go up 22,000. So, the difference between the other two would be?
Not knowing this, I just budgeted our increase. See, it was 11,730. I budgeted 15, I was tied.
I understand, I understand that. So, the, from going to, the second one to the first one, the third one, it'd be an increase of $18,200.
Yes. That's correct.
Do you have the money to pay for that? If they, if the council would choose that?
Yeah, the, let's see here. When, when is the employee benefit, 11 benefit, technical number, we, that goes into effect for July? Does that start, yeah? So, you'd have, you'd have to take it out of the general.
And I'm also, I agree with Jamie too, where, you know, if you have the second one, and, you know, you didn't have a lot of claims on it, you could look at going to the third one. If you have a third one, you have a lot of claims, you're gonna be screwed come next time.
Left a record shot, never cut through.
I'm in the support of the lower left program.
I am too. That's kind of what I was leaning on, and if we, obviously, the budget is in that range anyways, it makes sense to go that, and, you know, next year, they can revisit, the council next year can revisit.
I agree. Any questions, Jamie?
I see.
Yeah, that's a motion. I make a motion to do the enhanced benefit, which is the $500 or deductible per person, 1,000 per family, for the increase of 15%.
Yeah, motion goes second.
I'll second.
Mike.
Aye.
John.
Aye.
Sarah.
Aye.
Thank you very much, Jamie, for explaining that to us.
Thank you. Just, one, I guess, the, the last parting thought, because I could be on the same call with you guys next year. 15% is somewhat variable. Could be less than that, could be a couple points more than that. I just want to make sure that that's in the air because you can't predict what those claims look like for sure. But I think this is a, this is a wise cost analysis. I'm not trying to be aggressive to push something through, I think it makes sense.
Thank you very much, Ray.
Thank you.
All right, guys, thank you.
Discussion about school action in reference to purchasing hearing protection.
So, you see this quote that I attached, and I also showed you the grant that I applied for through our work comp provider, and then you saw the email about the thanks but no thanks. thanks. The interesting part about this is IMWCA, two days or maybe the next day after they sent the email, sent out all the pamphlets to everybody about recommending hearing protection for their employees and all this stuff. So, the as of May, we do have some funds available in this year's budget, as, you know, we're winding down, for some hearing protection. And then also, in the packet, advanced hearing comes to town annually, and they've offered to test our employees each year for free, to offer a hearing test. We've already got a baseline, thanks to them for that, and that was provided with this grant. So, we can continue to monitor the data as we go forward. But I did some calculations today, I did put on here, July minor equipment, which we did budget for, but I'm thinking I can get it out of this budget.
What do we do if our employees don't use them?
Just kind of put it in their SAPs that they got.
Yeah, I think we're gonna probably have to create a policy, and when noise is above a threshold that would affect hearing loss, they're gonna have to...
I mean, I could see that, how big your problem is before. Now, I'm, I'm, trust me, because I answer the phone all the time, my ear ringing, from not doing it, so I'm 100% in favor of it, that the people have to wear them.
I think the biggest thing, Travis, you can talk about too, but the chipping and the leaf fact are the two big, are the big things. And then when you're around equipment, digging a grave, you can't communicate, and this allows communication as well as sound.
Is there a headset, like, is there a microphone?
Yeah.
That's nice.
So, I think it's a safety, an overall safety thing, just for the whole project, let alone safety for the years as well.
We needed this when we got the carpet for the leafs. There is zero communication from the guy in the back of that trailer with the guy in the trailer. And that's, that's our number one safety thing. When we started looking into this, we found a numerous array of different things that worked great with this, but not so great with this. At the last conference I was at, I talked to multiple cities that have this style, Hilaux does, Solr does, West Des Moines, just a bunch of people that's used this and used it for years, and are confident that this is what they can get their employees to use on a regular basis.
Is this multi-channel, so if the leaf crew is out, two of them are out with these things, and someone's doing a grave at the cemetery, are they gonna be talking to each other, or?
No, this is, because it's a line of sight. So, this actually has a radio in the box.
There's a limited range.
Yeah, 600...
It's like a Walmart walkie-talkie type of thing, where it's a radio frequency.
So, if two guys are doing the chipping and two guys are out doing something at the cemetery, it's not gonna interfere with the people chipping, right? Okay.
Well, I'm in favor of that.
Oh, I am too, I would rather be safe in, on all aspects.
Motion, Brandon, a second.
Second.
Motion, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Both. Discussion possible action in reference to change order number two to our T D mechanical.
So, Eric is gone, so Dave had to cover a meeting for Eric, so neither one of them cannot be here tonight, however. On the change order number two, there was a few alignment changes, as you can see, described up here, that only made sense to do to create less issue in the future, but also speed up the process of the work being done in that area. But the majority of this is the intersection of Market and Washington. And I know I talked to Doug one day when he was in here, when they cored that out, I had actually gone over to look at the gutter, and they had a roller in rolling that area out, and it was very similar to like a waterbed material, where when you were moving, the ground over here was moving ahead of it. So, it's not very good soil, so we had no choice. We could've put the concrete there, but it would not have lasted. So, we really had no choice other than to core out that foundation, put in GeoGrid, rock, a French drain system, which is gonna actually end up coming down in front of City Hall, the tile, and then go down to First Avenue. And then this way, firmed it up, did everything that, that was requested by the engineer, and this shit solidified for years to come. So, as you can see in this bid, that was the basket.
28,000.
What's that?
28,000.
There it is.
Yeah.
Where?
The very first thing discussing.
28,340.
It has B and K on it. You're probably looking for breki, but B and K is the big symbol on it.
I'm still on the headset thing.
I was just gonna say.
Sorry, first, right there.
It's a, it's a, it's something. Okay. I mean, it's, you know, it just sucks that, you know, we...
You can't anticipate.
Yeah, in fact, yeah, and this is just a big one, I mean, it's, you know.
I think we, and we knew going into this that there was going to be issues, underlying issues that we weren't aware of, and...
You also, you also gotta realize, you know, we accepted a bid that was quite a bit cheaper than the second one.
Oh, yeah.
You know, I mean, we have a little, I'm not saying that we want to spend them up to that second bid, but I mean, so, they need a motion to pay it.
I make a motion to pay the breki mechanical in the amount of 21...
Nope, nope.
Sorry.
28.
You're just accepting the change ordering, or change order, or, yep, sorry. Make a motion to accept the change order.
Thank you.
To breki mechanical.
No motion or a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Discussion possible action in reference to payment to pay estimate number two for breki mechanical in the amount of $221,732.43.
So, this came from B and K, and they went over all the documents and the quantities, and it matched their calculation, so they request that we pay that amount.
Is that what this quarter cost us?
No, 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 this is just part of the project, this is their payment number two. As they get work done, they're gonna keep submitting on these bills.
Motion approved. Motion to approve a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Public hearing for Zon Chapter 165 update.
Motion to go into public hearing.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Public hearing.
All right, this is for the Mike Ryland garage, if you recall. This, I, per March request, we went ahead and added, or add P and Z meeting, and if you look on page two of this document, it's got the triangular design there, 2A, we added lots over one acre, accessory buildings or structure may be erected in the front, side, or side, as long as it's within the front and side setbacks. An accessory building or structure may be erected prior to primary structure only if the building permits are submitted and issued at the same time for both the primary and accessory building structures, and completed within the 12 months of the date the permits are issued. That last part is already part of the ordinance up above, so we added it there. So, really, we're only adding part of, in lots over one acre. They can build in the front, the side, as long as they are within the front setback and side, and then in the side setback, as long as they are within the side, the front, and the back.
Any questions? Motion go up, please. Please, open, right here. Motion go up, close session. No motion or a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? First reading of ordinance number four, 2023, update to change, update to Chapter 165 supplemental district regulations, council suspension of rules, and place of third and final reading.
Motion to approve the first reading.
Have a motion to the first read or a second?
Second.
Sarah?
Aye.
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Nate? Aye.
Do I have a motion to suspend the rules?
So, we did talk to him at the last, when he was here, he says that there was kind of a, we're waiting to see if there was any response. I've gotten none in reference to this, other than support. So, I think this is inevitable. P and Z located, thought it was a good idea, so I think, I would feel comfortable doing it, but that's up to you.
I'll make a motion to suspend the rules and place the ordinance on the third and final reading.
I second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No motion for a third read, third and final reading?
I make a motion for the third and final reading.
Motion a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I mean, we'll call.
Yeah, give her a call for that one, please.
Sarah?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Aye.
Discussion possible action in reference to employee union contract.
All right, so you should have the contract in there, and we can go over some of this stuff. Did everybody read packet, I kind of, that's the Reader Digest version, I guess, and I'll kind of go off that. So, one thing is, you know, when you go through this, we try to look at things that are, that have occurred, or that are close to occurring, that may cause an issue with what's happening or what's currently in the contract. So, the other thing too, is if there's a way to present an added benefit to an employee that really doesn't cost any kind of money, but it might be a nice thing to have for them, we always look for ways to do that too. So, I'll kind of go over this as we go. Travis and I met, kind of went over this, I ran everything through John and Nate. So, the first thing is, in Article Four, we're requesting the change to begin the insurance on the first day of the calendar month following the hire date. The reason for that is because if you're, if somebody was to leave an employer and come to work here, regardless of their circumstance, they're covered by insurance through the end of the month. So, when they start here, if they started on the 15th of the month, they're covered by their previous employer until the first. We can't even add them to the first, until the first. But what this does is, there was a chance, because it said by the first of the month following, you, the, it could've, you could've had a gap, I guess, and we ran into this before. So, we just made the language change to coincide with not having a gap. Article Five was an easy one, remove, remove the PD language. Article Six, so that was, if, what we currently have right now, for employees to, on vacation time, they have to be here one full year before they get two weeks' time. That may have been a thing back in the 90s, early 2000s, but it's really not anymore. So, what we'd like to do is add, after two months, the employees will receive 40 of their 80 hours, so that they can use it. And then, I don't know if I talked about that, and then, also requesting a change, instead of carrying over five days and use it in the first 90 days, we want to change it to carry over 10 days and use it in 180. So, we have situations now where employees choose, I guess, feel like they can't get away, or if they go to carry over, and let's say their anniversary is in February or a cool month, they may not have anywhere to go other than just sit at home, and this gives them a little bit more flexibility to use their time when they choose to use their time. So, expand the carryover from five to 10, and then from 90 days to 180 days. Feel free to stop me anytime, you can keep going here, feel free to stop me anytime if you need it. Article Seven, there's discussion, I know Travis, I ran into this at one of the league meetings, and Travis had the same thing at one of his conferences, requesting to add Martin Luther King Day to January as a paid holiday. As I said in here, it's been a topic of many discussions, been on ClerkNet, along with some other dates. But several cities are starting to, if they haven't had this, they're starting to change this. So, I talked to John and Nate about that, and they didn't see an issue with it. Article Eight is another easy change. Our coverage for life insurance starts at $50,000, the contract's got $25,000, we can't buy any less than that, so it's just changing it to what it is. So, it's $50,000 worth of coverage, because that's what it is.
Going back...
Yeah.
To Martin Luther King.
Yeah.
For example, what happens if there's, I mean, that's not a, you're, you're going to have a, everybody's gonna have it off or be paid for it, correct?
Well, they're getting paid anyway, but they'll just have the day off, correct?
What do you mean?
Well, I guess I'm confused, I thought you said they weren't being paid before.
They're working it and getting paid, it doesn't be a day off.
They're working, they're working. Apparently, it's not. Right. What's, what's happened is, is there's people that are hired that choose to celebrate that, and have created issues places about not having that as a holiday. And obviously, with the world, things are changing and happening, so there's a lot of people adding this back and just kind of changing with the times. So, there's probably about 50% of the cities right now that have it. There's also, they've added Juneteenth, which obviously, we're not looking to do, but...
Yeah, next Monday, that's what I was gonna say.
So, it's just, things are changing, and I'm not, I'm not here to compare, I know that, I mean, I had it, you know, before, we had 12 paid holidays, here we have 11. Some people don't call it Martin Luther King, they give them a floating holiday, that's another, another thing that people have, so, does that answer? You're not, it's not costing you anymore, you're still paying the same whether they're here or there.
Yep.
It's just not, they work out.
Right, correct.
So, I want to say something really bad, but I didn't. You just, you know, I mean...
All right. Article Nine, we updated starting wage, and this was through personnel, we've just, so whatever the cost of living increase is each year, we've upped that starting pay. So, that way, if it, the problem was before, it stayed the same for so long, and we couldn't get people to come to work here because the starting wage was the same in 2013 as it was in 2019. So, what you should be doing is adding to that whatever your cost of living is, so that at least you're keeping up with the cost of living rates.
So, the 21, like, entry level 21 and 2, next year it'll be 5% higher.
Yep, that's accepted, yes, yep. And then we added the entry level to give us a little bit more flexibility to hire at a public works one, or say, hey, this person's green, they've never had this type of job, or for whatever reason, so we added that as well.
Are all of our employees right now these ones, grade ones?
Yeah, this is new, the entry is not.
I mean, but they consider it a public, a public work one.
Yes, yes. Yep. So, then on the wages, unions requested a 5% cost of living raise each year for the next three years. And I put the note in here with the spike of CPI, which is Consumer Price Index over the last three years. 2021 CPI was 4.7%, 2022 was 8%, and so far this year, it's a 5.8, and that's an average. They've also agreed that, or have the understanding that when we give the merit raises, that, you know, if CPI drops to a half a percent, or 2%, or it goes negative, or whatever the case may be, that they were, they're not expected to receive that extra merit raise if the gap is significant or what have you, so... So, and I did some checking around. Some people are giving six-five-four, some people are giving five-five-four with a, with a dollar bonus. It's just, everybody's kind of in that, in that ballpark. I think we talked about that previously, so. Article Thirteen. So, this is a sick leave conversion. We have one employee right now that is maxed out on sick leave. So, essentially, eight hours a month is basically added and then taken back off their bills. One thing that I created at another place was adding a conversion. Seven hundred hours is based on long-term disability, so six hundred eighty-six gets you to a long-term disability, that's six months' worth of time worked. Thought is after, after that, one time a year on your anniversary, you can convert any hours over seven hundred, two to one to vacation. The thought of that is, it's just a one-time thing, you know, each year. It incentivizes employees to build their sick leave. So, one, you know, we all get older, things happen. Two, you know, if something serious happens, they have that time. And then, three, they can get to seven hundred and they know that if they wanted that vacation hours, they come to work and not use their sick leave or abuse it. So, it's just kind of a good incentive tool. So, they convert two hours to one vacation once a year on their anniversary as long as the conversion. After the conversion, they have no less than seven hundred hours in their bank. So, if they got eight hours or eight hundred hours, they can take, take it down to seven hundred and get fifty hours of vacation, which is a day and, a week and one and a half days.
And you gotta realize, I mean, somebody that's, that were seven hundred hours, I think he's seven days. I mean, to give seven hundred dollars, that's, that's a lot of days to call him out to insect. I don't remember all that.
And then, the one thing I didn't add, and I know that we had talked about this previously and I talked a little bit even today with John. And this is in the handbook as well. If you, if you turn to page ten, it's under Article Nine of the salaries, where it talks about the entry level. If you go down and look at the longevity pay, Travis and I were trying to come up with something and I know that I talked to Nate and John at one time about this and they wanted some comparables to see what other places were doing. So, one thing, you see it starts five, is everybody there, can I see this? So, five to nine, it ends up going to thirty-six to forty years. Well, with, with the rule Iper's, you know, you can retire at fifty-five. So, you in a sense have to start here when you're fifteen to ever reach this cap. So, everything that I've seen and read, some, some of it goes to twenty-five, some goes to twenty. The other thing too is if you start at the top and work your way down to what this equals out to, it's two hundred and eight dollars, three hundred and twelve, four sixteen, five twenty, six twenty-four, eight thirty-two, and a thousand and forty. Of everything that I've compared to, this is extremely low. But again, this is also in the handbook, so I, I don't wanna feel like I'm fighting myself here. But this would be the only thing other than the five percent raise that you would give the contract or employees would be if you chose to increase the longevity. Couple options, we're five to ten years at five hundred, ten to fifteen was a thousand, fifteen to twenty was fifteen hundred and twenty years and up was two thousand and that's what our neighbors have. Travis and I kinda talked and thought maybe instead of that, like, kinda for now, just go six hundred, nine hundred, twelve hundred and fifteen hundred. So, six hundred for five to ten, ten to fifteen at nine hundred, fifteen to twenty at twelve hundred and twenty-one years and up, fifteen hundred. But again, I feel comfortable quitting in this because I'm, I'm representing you on this and I think it should be a decision you guys make for that. If it's something you wanna do a different day, that, that's fine too. But those were the, those were the main changes or discussion pieces.
I mean, we do it a different day, we had to open the contract.
Unless you gave.
We have longer to open the contract.
Yeah.
I mean, unless you want, I mean, if you want to do it now, you can do it now. Obviously, if we do it later, why not get the union to agree to open the contract? I mean, we're giving them money, they probably wouldn't have a problem to, if we want to give you some more time to think about it.
I know this is new, but I didn't wanna put this in here because I, it's in the handbook as well, so.
And I think if we change this, we need to change the handbook. It should be mirror across the board, right? Maybe that makes total sense.
That's what we've typically done. We've made the handbook match.
Yep.
I mean, actually, if we accept it, I mean, we could make the change next, the next council meeting and then go to effect July first.
You know, the thing is, I just wanna get this printed and drawn. That's kinda why we met tonight, because it goes into effect July one and it's gotta still go to the local yet.
I, I think the last scan you gave there is five.
Three, six, nine, twelve, or three, six, nine?
What?
Six, nine, twelve, fifteen.
Then we got a problem, Doug?
No, I like it, I like it too.
We can change it now from six, nine. Alright, what's next on the contract?
That's, that'd be it. It'd be just you guys asking questions or, I just wanna make sure everybody understands it and if you have any questions about anything in there, please let me know. Again, most of this is just either things that are coming into play or have come into play that just need tweaked.
Nine, nine, seven, you can eliminate.
What's that?
Nine, seven.
What do you got there?
So, you should.
Police officer for washing, wearing a uniform.
Thousand dollar per year for the police officers.
What do you got, Doug, where's that at?
Nine, seven.
Well, what's, what do you mean, nine point seven?
Nine point seven, I see where he's at. I, yeah, we can.
I think that's still okay. Now, you're already getting better insurance, you're getting better one.
I can take that out of there.
Alright, yeah, good catch. Well, I read this a hundred times.
Do you, you got, you know, you get four hundred dollars a mo, a year, Travis, you guys use that?
Yeah.
Do they use it all?
Everybody, there's, there's a couple, couple times, there's a couple employees that don't use it all and then a majority do.
Are you using it basically on, like, work?
Boots have the biggest. Boots have the biggest thing.
I mean, cause like, one, one thing that I like to see is, I like to see you all have really nice winter jackets, ones that felt the cold.
They, like, the winter jacket stuff is stuff that normally stay here. They, we do have some that we've got in the past. That's in every five or six years, we'll upgrade our jackets and that's just been a budgetary thing. That doesn't come from, and they, they stay at the shop.
I mean, you know, you could spend a couple hundred dollars on this card.
Oh, yeah.
That could blow this budget really fast.
Yeah, so, and that's actually coming up because I think Jason was the last time, when Jason was hired is the last time we bought him, so.
Anybody got anything else? Article Ten, employee training authorization. I mean, it did now, says one hundred percent, we'll pay a hundred percent for a year or less, what if they can't get in class? What if the class ain't offered? You know, like, let's say it's offered in July and the next one, until.
That's if the player resigns.
That's if they.
Yeah, they have to read the paperwork.
She pays a hundred percent.
Yeah, we had to put that in there to protect us.
Yeah, that's how somebody can't get training on us and then leave.
A lot of that was for the academy, I think.
Yeah.
That was the CDL program.
Yeah.
Yep.
Anybody else?
I don't have any.
Do we need an action on C and D?
Uh, just on D, because that you have to approve this per resolution.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You ready?
Yeah, you'll approve it with all of them.
Make sure it's okay with the contract.
Yep, and the X, you know, the, so I've got it on there.
Yep.
Do you have a motion yet?
John, so you're ready to move on, I guess that's a motion?
Yeah, I'm moved to approve as discussed.
There we go.
Your motion's second?
I'll second.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Roll call.
Yeah.
Another discussion, we've got the resolution, yeah. Now I'm doing a resolution. Resolution eighteen, twenty-twenty-three, approve union contract. Sarah?
Aye.
Aye.
Mike?
Hi.
Nate?
Aye.
You're just wondering what just went out there. Just wondering what's going on.
Just trying to trick me.
Alright, correspondence.
I see two emails. The first one is from Mary Ann Zaborc. Off, they're asking about watering the gardens. She talks about swimming pools, water and sod, which is currently in our ordinance. I advised her that, you know, if she wanted to do this, I said I could either share this email or she could come and give her three-minute talk or we could add it to the agenda. She just wanted to just kinda show you guys the email. So, while I totally respect what she's trying to do and appreciate the fact that people grow their food, I believe this has come up before and the problem is gonna be the enforcement piece of this. I don't know, basically, you're, you're gonna get your honest people to tell you that they're doing this and then when we call people and we do this monthly, because I have the girls call, I say, hey, you know, if there's a, there's a high read, you wanna catch it. You have a leaky toilet, you have this. And I'm just afraid of people saying, well, yeah, I water my garden. There's no rhyme or reason to know how much that is. The thing with the sod is that you don't know that either, but that's a two-month, two-month deal. And then, with the swimming pools, we have them bring documentation as to how many gallons their pool is and then we coincide with the read to know where we're at with that. So, it's easier to monitor.
We also go out and measure it. So, you can't give me a different dimensions than what your pool actually is. With pools, don't they have to let us know before they?
Correct, they, and, yeah, we have a whole list and.
I'm not surprised we actually do that. You are using it.
Right, but.
If you're charging the water.
We're not charging it, because there's nothing going.
It's really not going, and that's saying the same thing with the garden, which would be true. But, and I would be all for it if we could figure out a way to monitor it. We don't have enough meters to, I mean, it'd be nearly impossible to do that, so.
Nobody wants to pay the extra for.
Yeah, which.
And everybody will have a garden all of a sudden, but not really have a garden. Like, that's what I'm afraid of.
We are going to, if they come down before and say, I water my lawn.
Oh, is that our team?
It's so much higher than normally they have.
The problem is gonna be, and I guess, correct, but I think you said if they did it beforehand?
Yeah, if they follow the same protocol as a pool, like, okay, what's the size of your garden? Yeah, I mean, but still, I mean, I just, I don't, I don't think it's a very good thing. We'll have people taking it down.
Yeah, some, somehow my mother-in-law gets watering, a bill for watering and then a separate one for.
Yeah, a separate.
For the normal use, but she mustn't have two meters.
They have separate meters and that's in our ordinance. If you can get an irrigation meter, you have to have a plumber come in and install a Y, we inspect it, put a meter in it and that's what that's meant for. So, it's in there, we have in.
We have a couple.
Yeah.
And so, that, that meter, we don't, they don't get charged through her, right?
Zero super.
So, there is her option. If she wants to have a plumber come in and hook it up, I guess then that would be, I mean, if she's all kind of whole better.
Yeah, I think from a city standpoint, we're still using the water. Oh, yeah, they always have to pay for the water.
Yeah.
I mean, and the bad thing, I, the bad thing, you know, ten people doing, eight out of ten are gonna be completely honest with you. Two of them, you know.
Yeah, I.
As long as they give us a prayer, no, just don't have a leaky toilet and say, oh, I water my lawn. Well, you should've told us before you started watering your lawn. You already have that discount available to you.
And you go to their house and they don't have a garden.
Yeah.
It's still watering their lawn anyways.
I mean, it's, so you, you want them to go out and read the meter before they start?
No, just to let us know that they're going to be using water that isn't going down the sewer. And if indeed they have a much higher reading for those summer months, then they get that sewer discount, but.
So, we have to go back in the average of like last six months and twenty-seven?
Yeah, yeah, I don't think that's a big deal. I don't think they'll have that many. If somebody's got a leaky toilet and discovers it and they have, let us know they're going to have a garden, tough luck. So, so they can't cheat that way. No, but you're saying a leaking toilet?
A leaky toilet from the river, that's why I'm sure.
Sewer though, that water does, so. If the water, if, if you got a, a leaky.
I just, I, I think we're just opening ourselves up because the next person's gonna come in and say, well, then I want to have, just use my water for feeding my chickens.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, I want, yeah, or the goats that I have in my backyard or whatever it may be. I mean, we're just opening, I, I lived on East Market, there was goats in somebody's backyard.
As a, as, as your water operator, in pretend, we put this in effect because we have currently two wells. We're, keep in mind, we're constructing another one, but let's just forget about the one we're constructing, we have two wells. Okay, we're getting to be dry like we were when we put this into effect. We lose one well, we can't meet the demand that we have now. So, if you, if, if you green light and say, well, just let us know you're watering and we start letting people water just so they can mow or, I mean, we're not gonna, we're gonna.
Keep the grass green now.
Yes, we're gonna be in a bigger problem than what we have now. I feel that we have, as the water department and as the city, given people the option to install an op, another meter, to do what they wanna do. If they don't wanna incur that cost, I don't think we should risk our system.
No, I totally agree with you.
I think we have enough in our ordinances already and we don't think we brought back for discussion.
You know, our now system's on more of a supply now. I mean, we're watering over there and we're watering over here.
Yeah.
Twice the ball fields.
Yeah.
Two and a half times by the ball fields.
As much as I would love to, I just don't think, I just think we're, and, and I said it before, they can have an irrigation meter put in. We're giving, we, we're giving that, whether they know they have that option or not, that's giving them a discount right there. At the end of the day, it's gonna pay for itself.
It will eventually pay for it.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, good on you, Mike.
No, just a, no action. And then just a thank you from Steve McMill to maintenance staff over at the Pleasant Grove Park.
Saw somebody fishing there in South. Do dogs swim in there?
Dogs are allowed to park.
Dogs are allowed to park.
Which we need to change.
Alright, student engineer report.
I'll get it with online.
Okay. What was your tour?
Alright, due to the, the way everything's been going, we've kinda switched our route. We jumped on to School Street, which we weren't gonna be at until later date. With construction hopefully starting for the school next month, we thought it was better to get out of there. Brandon and I had some concerns about Washington Street being completed before Sauerkraut Days. So, our chain of events for the next six weeks are gonna be to finish Second Avenue. Obviously, finish the storm and everything left on Washington to get that whole again. Have Second Avenue School Street done. Have Second Avenue, School Street done. Um, School Street won't be full except for, I mean, everything except for by the intersection, which will have a standpipe coming out, but we're gonna need to make our connection again when we go down Washington. But, we're gonna do that, um, Second Avenue, and then start on Market Street and work our way out. And if we have time in between when this is done, and sauerkraut days, and we will start on the other side of thirty, working our way this way, we just don't wanna have any, any obstacles for the people and the traffic. And we just thought it was gonna be better. With, uh, the stuff we found on this portion of Washington, we didn't wanna find any more surprises and to set us back.
And it would tear up the intersection, so. We'll just, I was getting kinda nervous about it, um, we've been a little behind due to the, the line gas project on Washington, so.
And we don't want that to happen to us again, so, so we got that. Um, with that being said, I have talked to the project manager from Recky, he said this was a very aggressive timeline. Um, he, he doesn't know where this time came from exactly, was his words he told me. So, we, he doesn't think we're that far behind. Um, we have some concerns, but they're gonna do their best. Um, Third Avenue was actually a little hiccup, this right here, this intersection was a little hiccup. So, hopefully, hopefully all that stuff starts going along smoother for us, so. That's it for the engineer, um. We have been watering like crazy. Out at Sports Complex, I think that's eaten up, once you guys say probably ninety percent of the summer help's time. Um, the other ten percent's trying to help degrade me in the parks, so, um, there is really no downtime with those kids. Other than that, the tree at the splash pad is leaking and seeding out right now. There is no way to keep those out of the splash pad.
There is?
Yeah, well, there is, but there's no feasible way to keep it out of the splash pad. I had a call at City Hall today saying that Dr. Poole was very, you know, something wrong. Um, it's literally another two weeks and we'll be through this and we'll be good to go again, so. If anybody gives you any concerns about the, it's literally the stuff falling down the trees, the seeds, so, that's all I have.
Any big idea anything for Travis? All the trees taken out that we needed to take down?
No.
And pulls?
Uh, for what?
I mean, I, like, is he updating on trees in town?
No, we have a couple, we did get Alliance to take down one for us. Um, Mike has questionable ones in front of his, and we'll know when we get over there for the water main. We still have some out at the cemetery that I'm hoping with as dry as it's been, we can get those done.
We're busy a tree out.
Oh, we're, Chris Bowman lives on the corner.
Yep, that's on the list, there's two at Bo Dylan, or at the park, at Bo Dylan's, it's on the list.
Just since it came up, the one that goes down in front of my house, does that just dead end then?
Yes.
It doesn't come back and connect?
No, that's for future growth, as they're, as they're playing now. If you look in, on First, going across First Street, um, First Avenue, sorry. First Avenue, there's a candy cane, I call them a candy cane, it's flushing hydrant. So, what that does is that stubbed out for future, but you also wanna make sure that that water doesn't get stale, so we'll go in there periodically flush that water to make sure our water content. Plus, it also gives us another testing spot to make sure our water quality's good too, so.
Any other things for Travis? First one?
Uh, just a couple things, we are in week four of summer ball, um, so we had our first games last week, so we got, uh, games this week, and then we got two weeks left after that, so everything there's going good. Um, I've just been mowing, uh, weeding, all the, all the things I do every day. Um, I do wanna say thanks to the summer help kids, cause watering is not, it's an easy thing to do, but it's not a fun thing to do. I mean, it gets boring for them and they're, they're taking it really well and they're helping us out a lot. Um, and then Brian as well, he's been a huge help for me, mowing and things like that, so. They've done really well so far, it's, uh, nice to see. Um, the only other thing, I'm still working on sponsorship stuff for the Sports Complex, um, and I've been helping out with all the watering and things like that, so. Other than that, we've got some events coming up for sauerkraut days, um, we'll have our back to school night again. We're back again at the city park, and I think that's about it.
Any questions for Drayton? Please, Department.
Just kinda wanna highlight, a couple things on the report, obviously it was a busy month looking at the numbers we had reported for the number of reports we took. Encourage, uh, the public to, uh, we have, we had fourteen collisions between Mount Vernon and Lisbon last month, um, which is way high for our average, uh, per month, we was average four or five. Um, from that, so most of them fortunately were, um, back, you know, smaller accidents, backing, not paying attention, backing into a parked vehicle or something like that, because there's probably a lot more activities going on, a lot more activities at the parks and streets and stuff like that, so. Just encourage people again, I know it's nice out, everybody wants to be out enjoying, but slow down and enjoy. Um, don't let that ruin your day, uh, from that perspective. And down that, um, busy time, we are, we brought on two new reserve officers, um, one from Lisbon, Nick Mackey, um, currently going through the training program, so hopefully by sauerkraut days, hopefully by Heritage Days, but I don't, I'm very optimistic on that one. Um, but by sauerkraut days, you'll probably see them out for a run, and we're putting us back full staff for the reserve program too, which is great. So, down that, that's all I got.
I guess, Monstrous was deployed twice, once was to look for an arctide, the other one for a missing person.
Yep.
So when he found the missing person, did he attack him?
No, it was, he, he actually didn't find the missing person, but he came out to assist on that one, but, um.
I mean, he did move the pack out.
No, that would be more of your part.
Anybody got anything for Travis? Any ones?
Thanks, Travis.
Um, the reports included, he had a, um, something else he had planned for tonight, so he couldn't be here. But I also sent out that analysis, uh, he's gonna come next meeting and discuss that, so.
I mean, that, that's just amazing that they don't have any drop calls, I mean, of what he's, what he's done in the last couple of years, so. Heard you.
Alright, uh, we've been extremely busy, um, some of you may know, there was a fire on First Avenue, a garage fire. Um, I don't know how many of you follow Facebook, but, uh, the family there, um, decided to post that the following Monday, that they were gonna be selling cookies and lemonade from three PM to six PM, and all proceeds were won at the fire department. Uh, so in the course of that three hours, they raised over eight hundred dollars, and then they matched it. So, it was a sixteen hundred dollar donation for three hours of the cookie sales and lemonade sales, so. Uh, kudos to them, uh, kudos to the, the other fire department guys, um, for all the work that they did. Um, also, Mount Vernon Fire was involved with that, as well as I did call in, uh, Travis was gone, I called the RODM in. Um, we used the inloader, uh, which was a very valuable tool, uh, basically to lift up the sidewall where there was fire burning underneath it, so he was able to pull that back and lift it up so that we could, we could get further fire extinguished, so. Uh, just thanks to all involved with that, and, um, obviously it's a sad when somebody loses the, uh, property like that, but I think, uh, there's all these good stories, you know, involved with that too, so.
I talked to the occupants and I don't think that they've had their insurance company show up yet.
Yeah, it's, uh, I, I've also met with them and, um, yeah, it's, uh, it's a different time right, right now between insurance adjusters and contractors, it's, uh, it's hard to get ahold of people, so. Um, I'm also working on getting a bid for, um, the grass truck. Um, and we'll repurpose that grass truck to Public Works, and then also, um, we met with Alexa last week to go over some options with the new pumper truck, or potentially refurbishing one of our little ones, so. Um, that'll be down the road, but that's, uh, that's going on with that. And nothing else fire related. Well, sauerkraut days, we are gonna be doing the bathtub races, and of course, pancake breakfast and Labor Day.
Any questions for him? City administrator?
Um, at, at Sports Complex, um, it could've been the Monday after the last meeting with YTT and Dave Schmidt to go over the grass situation out there. Um, we came to the conclusion that they were gonna reseed it, um, haven't decided yet on who's paying for what yet, but, um, we're gonna work that out.
The grass north of the road looks better than what's in the south.
So, the north was planted sooner.
We did.
In the last window, yep, and the south was done like on one of the last two days of the window.
Yeah, we were hoping it would be enough, but.
So, um, but there is, with SUDAS, um, we can make them go reseeded, but there is language in there that doesn't hold them accountable for that grass seed to grow, and it's probably rightfully so, I mean, they're not, you know, you gotta have ideal conditions, but, um, thanks to the Public Works staff for Drayton, um, we kinda got a sprinkler system set up out there. It's not perfect, but, um, what'd you say, eighty-five percent of that's covered? Eighty to eighty-five percent of that.
All the track mods out there.
So, we, uh, got all that going and, um, Drayton's been pretty religious about getting out and watering it, so. Um, our hope is, is that, that starts filling in those gaps and we'll just, it'd be really nice if it drained, but, um.
You have service on the property, is it like where the pavilion was gonna be, or?
What's that now?
You have water service on the property.
Yes, yep, uh, there's a spigot there.
That was actually stuff hidden in the building.
Yeah, that was into the building before it fell down, wasn't it?
Yeah.
So, um.
Are we back in the schedule to build the building?
Yeah, so we're, we're waiting on the demo mini hole so that we can put the footings in, so as soon as we get that, we'll get out there and get that done and then get, get that building going, so. Um, I also met with John's Electric, uh, for the wiring of that. Um, and also I've been working with Alliance to get power to that area, I think we signed the, the last meeting, we signed the agreements with them, so. Uh, moving in the right direction, I am having a meeting next week with YTT. Uh, I want a status update on Ball Diamonds, um, I know this company that they're working with is, is hard at work and we're trying to, trying to get some progress to get that going, so. Um, we did have a contractor come out, uh, reference the windows out here at City Hall, um, I don't have a whole lot of details yet, but, um, they'll be working at that, um, to fix that issue. Um, last time, I, I sent the email out about those historic downtown signs, I kinda go on the black flag or the black poles. Last time I was supposed to bring them up, I printed off a copy of the picture of what they looked like and then forgot to mention them. So, I sent the email out, I didn't get any issues back from anybody, so I'm gonna have them go ahead and order those before their budget ends. Unless I hear you different. R and W is completed at the History Center, I think all things considered, I think they did a really, really nice job and, um, it looks better than I thought it would, um, it was a lot of money to make it look like that, but I think at the end of the day, it's a, it looks good. Uh, new wells started out, um, in the nature park, um, I don't have a status update, but those are kind of a, like a waiting game, so. I've heard, heard nothing, um, of negative thus far, so that's good. Uh, the GIS company is starting to send crews out to the cemetery, so if you see people out there with tripods and computers, that's, that's what they're doing, they're plotting all that data, they finally have, uh, it sounds like they got the software with the names and everything, so now they're coordinating their software to locations, so, uh, moving forward there. Um, as we mentioned, the Alliance Gas Project held us up on Washington Street. Um, reason for that is Alliance is putting a gas line, they're moving their line from the west side of the road to the east side of the road, so all those properties on the west side have to be bored under the road. We didn't wanna pour new concrete and have them bore and disturb that soil, so we waited. Um, and I know it's been painful for people along that street, I apologize, but we just didn't wanna have to do this twice and, uh, have issues later, so. Um, as you can tell here now, they're paving, um, it is our hope that we're off Washington Street by the end of next week. Um, so that would be driveways done, um, the only thing would be left then would be later on down the road deciding how we're gonna fix the rest of the surface, whether milling or, then, playing or, then grilling, whatever that is. John, you wanna talk about the library and your stuff, or do you want, about Amy?
Yeah, I don't, don't know what she wants released at this time.
Okay, so we'll, we'll wait on that, um, and then, uh, I met with Travis and Drayton today, uh, tried to get a plan together to have softball again for sauerkraut days at the park, so, um, we'll be working on that, coming up with a plan, try to figure that out. Uh, questions?
Any questions? Still, you got anything?
Just enjoying working two jobs all the time. Good March, you returned some money.
Do we have any estimate?
Uh, it changes, but soon we're hoping.
Hopefully towards the end of the week.
Yeah.
Sarah?
I don't really talk much.
John?
Uh, we'll have, the friends that live at the library will have a plant sale Friday and Saturday in front of the library, indoor and outdoor plants. And, uh, they'll also have a roundup with Brothers in September for the building part of the New Nationation Library. Sauerkraut Committee is gonna have a roundup of Brothers in August. That's all I have.
Mike?
Nothing.
Thank you.
I don't have anything.
One thing I got is, I just wanna thank the citizens of Lisbon for being patient with this watering project. I mean, it's paying off for everybody, but, you know, overall it'll be beneficial to everybody too, so, thank you for being patient. Thank you for all the city workers for the work they're doing, and that's it, may you journey.